I'll call the meeting order. We'll start with Fledge Allegiance.
Forgot to get the flag. That was John's.
Fledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as a reminder, this is the one time of year where I start the meeting as Secretary to the nominations for the committee chair. As I shared, if you are interested, Danielle is still willing to serve as the chair. So I would open it up to nominations.
I would nominate Danielle for chair.
I would second that.
Any discussion?
Can I serve?
Yes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any abstentions? I also take nomination for vice chair. As I shared, Heather is willing to do that if you are so interested.
No, I'm not interested.
I'll make a motion to nominate Heather Hamm.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Congratulations, Heather, you're the vice chair. Okay. I will turn that over to you, Danielle.
All right.
Gratefully.
Thank you, James. Good evening, everybody. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Okay. We'll first consider the minutes from our last meeting on June 6.
Madam Chairperson, they should be included in your packet. And by any errors or omission, I would recommend approval as written.
I second that.
All in favor?
Okay. Okay.
All right. Now's the time for public comments. So if anybody has anything to share with us, or anybody from the board who wants to say anything? Okay. There will be another chance at the end of the meeting as well. So first we have a presentation.
Right. So, as I shared in my letter, I invited Sheriff Morton here. We have met multiple times. The last time was with Chris Backman. One of the things that we've discussed in the past and that continually comes up is the conversation about a school resource officer. I asked him to come tonight to speak about what that would look like, what that means. Just to give you a refresher, particularly for those who haven't always been on the board. We've done things here as far as adding buzzers, cameras, lockdown systems. We have the emergency plan, which we'll talk about in a little bit. We've gone through the process of developing that. We've sent administration the training. We do the active shooter training in schools. This is one of those conversations that we look at what's the next level of safety? And also beyond safety, what can we do that will help support our students as far as understanding what the role of law enforcement is and supporting their connections with those people? Okay? So I'm going to ask Sheriff Morton to share his piece on the resource officer, and then we'll talk about that at the end. Thank you. Yep. It's right over your right shoulder. If you want to stand over here, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Steve, I'm a jail budget meeting. This is such an easier process.
Well, we appreciate you leaving that.
I really appreciate the opportunity to come down just a little bit about myself. I used to, I started my law enforcement career back in the late eighties, early nineties. Believe it or not, I'm still 21, but that's when I started. I actually worked down in the town of Orienton. Loved your community down here. We live in Eddington now. I have wonderful grandchildren who are living here in our community, so that's great, too. We are being asked or approached to provide law enforcement services in schools throughout Potters Scott County. Unprecedented numbers. And unfortunately, some of that's been driven by events that we've seen nationally. One of the challenges that we have in our profession is the rural patrol deputies that are covering. We cover 57 towns throughout Potters Scott County. The challenges that have been placed on deputies with a change in what's taking place with some of our state police coverage, you probably saw in the news, things have changed there. A little more birds on the sheriff deputies to cover more areas. It's pulled us a little bit more away from our schools. There were times that we could be here in the parking lot in the morning for pickups and drop offs, which was always nice. Sometimes the traffic flows. Just the visibility to be there, a connection with our children. And on top of it, a little extra layer of security and safety. I know dropping off my son when I was still dropping him off to school, he doesn't want me to do that now because that's where we're at high school. So he wants to step away. But I know sometimes just having those deputies pull into the yard and be there in a cruiser is a sense, a little sense of relief to parents dropping their children off. Or simply the children coming to school and they're building tremendous relationships with those officers. In the town of Orienton, you're very fortunate. We have a contract down here. It worked out very well. We changed a couple of years ago the direction of how the town provided law enforcement services. Those services are directly through my office now. We have three deputies down here that are assigned to the town. One actually lives here in the community and has children in school here. And they're contracted to provide the rural patrol services to all the functions in town. So while we can say they can stop by the school or perhaps be there for check in and drop offs, they're not always going to be able to do that. The town's done a great job by adding in backfill. That's something that we never had in the past down here. So if a deputy wasn't able to cover, or one of the town deputies weren't able to cover, it would go uncovered. And so that's no longer the case. We actually have a really good system in place. So with that being said, we've been approached about providing a resource officer. One of the questions that would come up first often is, could you even get somebody to do it? We are tremendously blessed at the sheriff's office. Well, one of a very few agencies around that have officers kind of begging to come to work for us. Some of it is how we treat our people. Some of it's the opportunities that we provide. We have a lot of resources, a lot of specialties within the sheriff's office. So some people are coming to our office because they want to be part of those specialties. So when we started looking around to see if there was people, deputies interested in coming to just do school resource functions, we were a little concerned, but the numbers have been great. So we've kind of put this out there because there are other towns. The town of Milford, the town of Herman is looking at as much as three deputies. And then certainly down here, we have a good pile of candidates who have already stepped forward if this comes to fruition via. So we are interested in being able to provide that service to the town of Orienton, having somebody directly linked to the school. The first and foremost thing is, I want to make sure that we're not sharing this as this is a fix all for all security. That's a function. That's a portion of this. I believe the greater connection is, how do we connect with our teachers, our volunteers, and most importantly, our students? There is so much value in the old model of DARE. And while DARE outgrew itself, those officers and kids that went through DARE remember those officers forever. Unfortunately, DARE is old because it's, it never changed its model. You know, it's still talked about stranger danger, which is a problem. But not near the problem that you folks face every day right here in your school and you see every day. So we are interested in partnering with you folks, having a deputy assigned to the school. We'd have to get into the weeds to really feel, what are your expectations? What are the hours that you want a person here? What do you want them to do? It's a learning thing, and because you're contracting, you mold that. There are certain things that we're going to require, that deputy is going to be in uniform, he's going to be armed, and they're going to have a marked police cruiser. And so those are things that, that we believe are important to be part of this. Things on what class they're in and where they stand and where they go, those are things that we can work out. Flexibility on the hours and how do we fill? We feel like it's a good partnership with the town. Because as the town, when, when the deputy's not working during the summer months, that deputy can be recycled back into the town of Orienton to provide additional services. We've, we've talked to the town on and off about, you know, how do we increase the services in the town during some of the busiest times? This would be a win-win for the community. And so it's not, once the deputy's off, we can't hire somebody for half a year. Hopefully, I'm covering some of the things that you want, and I'm happy to get any questions that you might have or thoughts. This is such a great group.
I was wondering, so you mentioned DARE, and I know that's an outdated program. Is there anything more recent that maybe other school resource officers do in schools? Like that are kind of more interactive with kids and safety programs of some sort? Or can you touch on that?
Yeah, so Maine Sheriff's Association, I just recently was the president of the Maine Sheriff's Association of all 16 counties. And Maine sheriffs identified that the reenactment or the rebirth of school resource officers was coming back. Unfortunately, budgets were tight and times were very tough on even getting officers to apply for jobs. And so school resources officers were disappearing across the state. But the sheriffs have heard clearly, particularly with rural schools, that there was a greater need or a greater want to incorporate them back into the schools. So about two years ago, we were part of Department of Education's ongoing School Resource Officer Program and starting to develop those. What's interesting, what we found was, they were really creating them for each school. What was important to each school is that there are certain classes that maybe the deputy could come in and speak to. But little things like being part of lunch, being part of kickball outdoors, the after school. I just pulled in and I've always amazed by this community because there's always something going on here, you know, with the kids. It's, I think it's just a great place. How do we engage the deputy in those type of things? But I feel like, I feel like we can make it what you folks want. What are we looking for? There are some basic, you know, a class on this, a class on that. We do a lot of those today. We come into a speaking engagement, you know, to a particular issue, whether it's substance use or bullying or things like that. We could certainly build those in. But I think the opportunity is, this can be creative. This can be your program. What do you think, what do you think we need? What would work best with the students?
Do you envision it being one of the officers that's already in town and our kids are familiar with? Because I have, I have a child who goes, he's going to be in eighth grade. He knows several of the officers by sight, some of whom he knows by name. A couple made a plan to sign for him on dress some days. So do you envision it being one of them? Do you envision it being somebody new that will need to kind of appreciate the nuts with the community and students? What do you think that looks like?
So we would, we have to offer it up to internal candidates first, per our union contracts. We've kind of already done it, even if you folks haven't said yes yet, to figure out who wants to go where. Because we're also looking at outside candidates that are potentially leaving other agencies for this position. And so I don't know particularly about the three deputies here. They're all great. One of the things that we spoke with the town manager and then superintendent about is, we know, I've been in this for a long time. I've worked our law enforcement contracts for a long, long time. I know that there's certain offices that you cannot put in the community, that they're better at this than they are at this. And this is the same type of thing. You couldn't put our best traffic officer into this position, right? It wouldn't make sense. We need the person that understands security of a school, relationships with our students, how to communicate with teachers and parents, how to go on a fly, right? Things change all the time. And so it's really about working and figuring that out. Long-winded answer to yours, I'm not totally sure. I'm confident that you would be very pleased, similar to if you asked the town if they've been pleased with the deputies that we've assigned. We have now almost 50 deputies. We've grown quite a bit in the past few years. But you'll see that, I don't think the town of Orienton has ever rejected a deputy that we sent down here to say, no, that kind of just doesn't fit for our community. To my knowledge, that hasn't happened. We would include you folks in the final process. Clearly, they're commissioned by the sheriff undermining, so we would be in the hiring process. But we would include you folks in that process to say, hey, here's some potential candidates. But as you know, in any other process, we have to be free, fair, and open to all that are involved. Starting times for us, I know your school year is quick. I feel that fairly, we could have this in place by October at the worst, and maybe actually a little quicker. So in the, just the past week that we've been kind of going back and forth, reaching out and asking questions. I know there's a couple, two candidates right now that are outstanding. One of them was a former school resource officer and left the position because that, that position was dissolved. They have an extreme interest in doing this. So, but that doesn't mean that's the right person for the community either.
So, I mean, my recommendation would be people make a motion to vote to hire a school resource officer. But you have to make that determination. Motion, section, discussion, when you do your work.
I would motion that we do hire a resource officer. Right. I would motion that we do hire a resource officer.
Well, I just thought of a question. How long would we, like, say we vote on it, are we contracting for one year? Are we into three years? What are we committing to?
It would be three years. It follows the town contract, which was just renegotiated in July, June.
Just started in July.
Just started in July.
And I guess I would ask, where does the funding come from? Is it in the existing budget or is it coming from somewhere else?
For this year, I believe that we'll be able to create it together from multiple sources so it doesn't impact your bottom line. A lot of that will be determined to be completely transparent by student count at high school in October, and then the actual tuition rates in December. However, the timing of this is good for the next two years because you already have a budget that encompasses your larger classes in high school, and they're going to be leaving. Which means that as you lose 20 students from the high school tuition. Well, you are.
Yeah, I know we are, yeah.
As they go up, that funding is now there, available without impact or raising the local budget.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, to add to the financial part of this, the timing is very good for you folks. If you do it now, not to, we can do it tomorrow, we can do it next year. But I know that law enforcement rates of pay are going to skyrocket. That we've seen what other, some other communities have done. It is working its way through all agencies. We've signed a three-year contract with the town with only a two and a half percent increase for the next three years, locked in place. And that's, if I'm throwing my cards on the table, I'm telling you that it's really, it's a great way to do it. Now, here's the thing. This contract's going to cost the county some money because you're not going to be able to pay for exact. We have to buy a car. We have to buy equipment. They have to drive back and forth. But the county truly wants to invest in communities that want to invest in itself. You're investing in yourself, you're paying money towards this, and as county taxpayers, the county wants to support that. And so that's, that's part of the deal. Anytime there was cases or overtime, those deputies may be working other things that has nothing to do with your contract. We did talk to the town manager. I feel like they've put some backfill into their budget. So if somebody called out sick, we could backfill that position and actually have somebody here. So we can get creative and work with your schedules as well. But we would require at least a three-year contract.
Any questions or discussion? The motion is still on the paper. If anybody wants to take it.
Okay. Okay. All right. On the paper.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll announce my retirement now. I'm going to come down and be the school resource officer. That's going to be perfect.
Have you talked to Christine about this? Is she aware?
I won't have to talk about the jail anymore.
That's what it is, congratulations.
I think, I think you'll be pleased. Too late, sir, you've already signed yours. I think you folks would be pleased with the process. We'll work through this if we can get it in place quicker, because I know we have some training and all of those things that would take place. I really envision us sitting down with you folks and, and whoever that little subcommittee could be to build expectations, hours, time of day, what do you want them to do? When it's, when it's the concert at night, do you want them to adjust hours and all of those things? We're, we're happy to build that all into this because you're paying extra to add this. So we look forward to the process. And our intent, if it's okay with you, is we're going to start advertising tomorrow, officially advertising. We have some other positions. I think I have 12 candidates right now that are just waiting to hand us the paper, so.
Let them know we're the best school.
Yeah.
You know what Herman said the same thing, now Herman.
Have they, have they seen the newspaper? Yeah. Have you seen what's happening in Herman? It's a step below Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our hand is. All right. So we'll move on to old business, which is the emergency plan.
You should have a copy of the plan in front of you. As I shared in my letter, it is an annual requirement that I bring it forward for your approval. It is something that does not leave the room kind of thing. I take it back when we're done for safety purposes. It is though, so that you can see that it's in place, that it's there, and that it is reviewed every summer. I would take any questions on that with the caveat that it can't be extremely specific for obvious reasons, but I would answer any questions you have about process or anything around that.
At a broad level, were there any changes to previous iterations?
So the biggest changes were phone numbers, personnel movement, that kind of piece. It was reviewed. There are a few revisions. However, we have another training coming up in September. So before we do any complete revision, we're going to have that take place first so that we can do it all at once.
What's the resource officer is on board for?
Will be part of the committee. It may, it absolutely may. The flip chart in the front, fluorescent orange is something that's put in every classroom because that is something that people utilize as a quick reference depending on the situation.
So how often is the training on this? Is it once a year in the beginning of the year?
Depends on which training you're talking about. When we talk about active shooter, that's once a year typically. If you're talking about further training, like we have different emergency groups that come through and do various trainings, that's not as much on a scheduled basis as far as when it's offered. And then various people, either from the committee or from administration, will go to those trainings to bring back that information. I would imagine with a resource officer, they will be bringing back information from the things that they go to as well as processes and procedures are updated on what best practices are.
And as far as like staff and teachers reviewing this?
Just the people on the committee. Staff get the fluorescent piece.
Okay, so they don't get this?
No.
Okay. So they all hide this in their classrooms and?
So I make a motion to accept the emergency plan as written? Is that what we need to do?
Yep.
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. So the next thing on is new business. We have our bill warrants.
Yep, I have them back.
Is there just one to sign?
Yes.
Okay.
We have annual fundraisers by the PTG. I think there's a.
Yep, it should be included in your packets. Again, it's an annual requirement that we bring it forward, so we try to bring it forward before school starts, so you have them all. I would take any questions on that, but otherwise I would recommend approval.
I'm excited about the coffee one. I don't remember that one. I like my coffee. We'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to accept the proposed fundraisers for the 2023 calendar year. 22, 23? I think I said 21.
We get it.
Have a second?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? Moving on to AOS 47 Committee members.
So with Mr. Hillman stepping off the board, he created two vacancies. One was the AOS 47 Board, and one was the Hancock Transportation Committee. Your, the way the AOS structure works, there are four members from Orienton that are on there and two from Dedham based on the cost share analysis and population and census. We have typically, so Heather already represents us for Spruce, so we have left her off that board typically, which would only leave Nikki. But you guys need to make that determination and decision as well. The AOS Board meets twice a year with a third potential meeting in the spring. It doesn't often have to happen, but that is there. The Hancock Transportation Meeting is three times a year. That oversees, just to refresh your memory, the Transportation Collaborative. We started with RC25, which is Buxport, and then Hancock and Lemoine. And that is where our current buses come from and where, why you see Santa Drive everywhere because we purchased our buses. And so that is a committee of four that oversee that facility because it is also, just to throw another acronym at you, an Educational Service Center because then we get more money back to pay for the cost of the director.
So who else is on that committee?
There is nobody else on that committee from here.
No, I know, what is that?
So we have two from Buxport, and then the other two are one from Hancock, one from Lemoine, and then we're the fifth.
So which one do you need before we hold?
AOS. And transportation is really, if there's somebody who's interested, Glennon has actually been in a couple of meetings when we started it the first time. Honestly, they're, they're usually pretty good meetings because you're just talking about transportation.
I'll do that. Tell me what to do.
I'll make a motion to nominate Professor for the AOS 47 Committee member.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? And then for Transportation Committee? I have to, I'm willing to do it. All right. I make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, so now we have our reports, the principal's report?
Absolutely. Sheriff Morton said this building doesn't stop. So we had a cheering clinic here last week, and I think it had to have been 100 degrees in the gym. But they were still here, so we have a busy building.
Who put that on?
Kristen did.
Oh, she did.
Oh, our city, yes. So we have Brian, BJ's in there now, you are, so you're doing another corner. So that doesn't seem to bother them. We've got a busy building, a lot going on for us as well. For administration, this is our time to kind of recharge. But recharging for us is trying to dig into things that you can't get into during the school year. So it's a nice pace. We've been working on the RTI process. You've heard me talk about that often. And this year, our focus is going to be on PBIS, which is behavioral portion of the response intervention. RTI has broken up into academic and behavior. So we have our academic piece that we've been working on for a couple of years. We were in a great pattern before COVID, and then of course, COVID hit. So we had to kind of recharge ourselves last year and get going again with it. So we'll continue to push forward with that while adding the behavioral portion this year, continuing to work through that. Mrs. Hocky and I have been slowly talking about in-service and staff meetings and all that kind of stuff. I started our planning for that, so it's just a busy time at school right now, but a good time. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Great. Next, we have Assistant Principals Report. Your first one.
Yeah. So I have been settling in, and I've received lots of support from administration and staff and everybody, so it's really great. I've been trying to really get organized before the school year gets going, so wish me luck with that one. This is the last week of summer school, and it's been a really great summer school. We've had an average of 65 students a day. We have been serving breakfast and lunch. And Wendy in the kitchen says maybe between 40 and 50 breakfasts and lunches a day. Students have been doing all kinds of different activities from baking to talk about fractions and following directions. We have a group that has been learning about the text features of skits, and they've been writing their own skits related to our core values that they hope to perform during assemblies during the school year. So that's really great stuff. And let's see, what else has been happening? We have new staff that have already been in the building getting acclimated, and they're really excited to go. We have two staff members who have shifted positions, and so they're. We have two staff members who have shifted positions, and so they're getting into their new roles and really excited about that. On the athletic front, so also athletic director, I have kind of revamped and updated the athletic handbook and the athletic website. We've walked the athletic fields outside, and we're getting those ready for some maintenance and some updating to the baseball field. And everything's all set for fall sports to begin.
Yeah, speaking of that, how the heck do I find out if Simon had his sports with the last year or the year before?
We can let you know.
I just called off.
Yeah.
Like typically they do it in fifth and seventh, if it's, but like I can't remember what happened when.
Yep.
It's two years. So as long as he's had something, as long as he's spent in the doctor for two years.
Well, it has, but the doctor's office needs two weeks.
Right, just, yeah, call the office, send an email, or you know.
I'll do that.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions for me?
Thank you. And then we have our people services director.
Yes, and you should have my report in your packet. Sharon already spoke about the summer school. I will just add that transportation, I think, has really helped a lot of families participate, and I see a lot of kids getting on and off of that.
I do know my neighbor said, "Well, I never would have done it if I'd had to take them because I would have to get the other kids up and out the door," but her kids have been out there every day. I love hearing little school buses. So I do think it has made a big difference.
Yeah, I think so too. Took a little bit of sorting out at the beginning to make sure because we have just two runs going. And the way I thought they would be going around the town is very different, and I know they know what they're doing, so just took me a while to wrap my head around it. I think that's a really important part of it, so just wanted to mention that. The caseloads for our specialized teachers, you know, sometimes they change when the kids move from fourth to fifth grade. And so we have that. We have a very large group of fifth graders, and if we moved them into the middle school with the current case manager, that would really unbalance everything. And so we've been working on how to rearrange those a little bit. Judy and I had to do a little bit of tweaking to the schedules to allow that to work well and to make sure that all of the students were receiving an equitable amount of attention from the case managers as well. But we've worked on that, and we're feeling really good about that and how that's going to work out, so we're real happy about those changes. And, you know, as is always the case, we have a lot of kids moving in and out during the summer, and sometimes they have some pretty significant needs. When they leave and they've had significant needs, then we need to relook at how we're using those staff people that have been working with them. So I'm looking at that and making sure that we have everybody covered and and that all the kids are well cared for while they're here. So that's what I have for you for the summer. It's a little quiet, which is kind of nice, but there's always plenty to be done to get ready for the next year. Do you have any questions?
Are there currently ed tech positions open, or are we still?
We are well-staffed with ed techs in this building. I could use some for the other build, one of my other buildings, so if we know of any, please send them my way.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And lastly, superintendent's report?
You have my report. We've worked through it through the process of the agenda except for personnel and the executive session. So barring any specific questions from you, I would recommend that you approve it as written.
All right, so you just received these reports, don't you?
Yep.
So acknowledged receipt of these reports. Any questions for Jane? Great. Moving on to personnel.
So we have a slate. Would you like me to do them individually, all together, separate them all by fives?
I think we could do them as a group. Is there anything to point out new or different?
So the first three personnel are new hires for those grades to fill some of the movements. Kate and Paul with the title one. Gil Maxwell is our O E teacher. On my guidance position, excepted another position, so we've replaced that. And then the other are all stipend positions for the different clubs and activities that we have throughout the year. August is typically the one where we have the most nominations between new hires, and there are a lot of stipends that go throughout the year as opposed to a winter sport kind of thing that will be in November.
And these are all, none of these look new as far as the clubs and everything?
All right, so I would nominate that you approve Ashley Blue in grade two, Derek Burke, grade eight, Sarah Mower, guidance, Kathy Johnson and Kylie Stevens yearbook, Kathy Johnson and Kylie Stevens photography, Wendy Stone, main studies director, Kathy Johnson graduation, Kathy Johnson, Adam Ontario Sci-Fi Club, Polly Miller, band jazz and chorus, Amanda Hill and Jessica Silleyboy, student council, Adam Ontario Dungeons and Dragons, Kylie Stevens art club, Benny Beam Hoff girls soccer, Tom Anderson boys soccer, and Janet Blanchard cross country.
Can we get a motion to accept all those nominations? Second half? Okay, any questions or discussion? All in favor? So there's no resignations or terminations?
No.
So now we will go into executive session?
You might want to do the public session first.
Oh, yeah, okay. So before we do that, is there anybody who has any comments from the public or even from the board?
I have a question. Adam, there are Dungeons and Dragons. What is?
It's a role-playing game club where students play the game called Dungeons and Dragons. And he is, and so there's, I'm not an expert, but there's the dungeon master, and then the kids all work through the different scenarios. It's almost like a, well, it's a role-playing game. It's like you're solving different puzzles to go to the next level kind of thing. And he's the staff member that oversees that. And he's the staff members that oversees that and develops some of these quests that they work on. Google Dungeons and Dragons is a whole lot. And it will do, it'll do a much better job than I just did.
Anything else? Okay, we'll be in executive session. I guess we're going to leave to do that?
Yep.
Are you going to leave? I was going to fix the cooler.
Yeah, we're going to go.
Okay. James, someone's here to eat.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Oh, yeah, no, no, I get it. No, no. I only felt bad because I'd known I would have been there, but don't even worry about it. No, don't even worry about it. Julie actually said it.
Do you want us to wait, please? I'll leave maybe more because I think all these come back and say. No, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm getting mine at the second session.
But it did say they had to consider the account for us because of this.
Yeah.
Looked like they were willing to sit down, but he still didn't say what he meant to say.
Yeah. The the road, I'd like to fix the road.
Yeah, fix the park.
Yeah. You know, and park on our, the Ottawa, on the Ottawa. They would do that. Yeah. Yeah. It did so with me. Listen to Sean.
Oh, I don't have the mic. I just didn't have it. I know. No, I haven't said anything back.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I'm back into a holder. Oh, no. In Josh's car. Hang on. I gotta make that.
Do I have to have this motion?
Yes.
Who's on?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second. All right, all in favor? Okay, so there's nobody left. No comments from the public. How about the board? So we can adjourn this meeting. We'll meet again on Tuesday, September 6th at 7:00 P.M.
Perfect, with a reminder that the following week is the AOS meeting at 6:30.
Where are those?
They rotate, so that one will be in Dedham. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for remembering.